Very good.
So this work session, today is Wednesday, February 28th, 2024. It's 5:30, 5:00 PM. And it's a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Marquette Township Board. So if you want to do a roll call, Randy?
Well, Trustee Iverson's absent and Treasurer Johnson is absent, excused. So Trustee Marks.
Present.
Trustee Winslow.
Present.
Trustee Ketta.
Here.
Clerk Rattar is here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Staff present is Jason McCarthy, Planner, and our manager, John Cangis. And we have two members of our Planning Commission here, Jim Johnson and Bethany Godey.
And kind of Linda, she can sit on both sides.
Well, each side.
Yeah.
I know.
Anybody in the public want to talk before we get started? It's just a work session, you're welcome to comment if you want.
Sure. The four of us are representatives of the Master Plan Social Program at Northern Michigan University. And most of us are in fact residents of the township. And we're more than interested, so thanks for letting us speak today.
Great, thanks for joining.
Why don't you give him a sandwich?
Yeah, you might as well take the sandwich, because we don't need that many.
You've got plenty of sandwiches, come and grab one. Jimmy John's.
No, this isn't the right, it's not the right agenda. That I printed.
It's from the website, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's not right.
Well, we can adjust it.
We'll just add it when we're back.
There was two, there were two more items, so I'll just look it up while we're, while we're sitting here.
Um, well, I guess we can start until you look it up.
Yeah, that's fine. Jason, we want to talk about staffing. You and I had a conversation about possibly hiring a part-timer in the summer to do some field work for you, as far as the blight issue, if you want to call it that.
Yeah, just property maintenance in general. So Lynn and I had a conversation last week about hiring a, maybe a former police officer or somebody with some knowledge of the, of the community, certainly, to go out and perform property maintenance. So looking at blighted properties, getting some letters out and enforcing that during the six months, hopefully, that we have of nice weather. So starting, we thought, May, June, July, August, September, October, or April, June, July, August, September, well, six months. We thought about paying the person $20 an hour. That would be a budget hit of basically $2,400 for the summer. That would allow staff, because it's kind of our busy season, and it's also the season where property maintenance gets conducted. So it would allow, you know, that person to go out and take pictures. We can educate that person on what we're looking for. And just kind of having the vehicle in the community, I think that would be a, a nice addition. Just driving around, I know that Eric's and I've experienced it too, where you're just out performing property maintenance and all of a sudden people come out of their houses and they're thanking you for assisting with that issue. But I think it's a positive thing. I don't think it's a major hit to the budget. I don't know if, if the board can make that happen or not. But that was going to be a proposal that we were going to bring to the board at their next regular meeting agenda, to see if that would be something they'd be willing to fund. So it's about 120 hours, at $20 an hour for six months. And yeah, they could go out and take the pictures with a date stamp. And we could teach them, we can get them on a laptop, we can teach them how to write the letters. Otherwise, we could bump the letters on ourselves.
And it probably allows a quicker response to a request.
It does, yeah, I mean.
So that's good.
Yeah. We're looking at maybe like five hours a week, you know, it's not, it's not a lot.
So I'm still curious if we can have some kind of an email where people can just email in a question, a property maintenance issue, instead of calling and interrupting business as it is. A form they can fill out and just.
We, we have that, even when people call, we have that.
Well, it'd be great if they could fill it out online and email it right to you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well, that's great, because I asked about that before and no one thought that existed. But it does.
We have a form, yeah.
So we just need to.
But we, we've been just complaint-driven. If you call us, we're not going to say, you know, go over to the Johnson's house and say, hey, the Petersons are complaining against you.
It's not about that.
Everything's anonymous.
It's about time people have to do things.
Right.
So people are thinking about that after, they work till 5:00, we're closed. So why can't we just have a form that goes in and response received and that's where it ends?
Yeah, we could have a button somewhere that just says complaint form and.
Maybe not complaint, but concern.
Yeah.
Concern, it's a nice word. An issue, yeah. I, I mean, I think that would be helpful to people, to be able to fill that out. You're going to get some quirk stuff, but you get quirk stuff now, Jason, right? People complain about, you know, someone left their Christmas wreath up too long.
Well, Roy, you're down.
Yeah.
You need it.
But anyway, having a, a part-time person, I think, would be helpful to our department, to be more responsive with property maintenance. But not only that, just to stand on top of it, because there is a sequence that needs to happen. You know, you don't just issue a citation the first time you write a letter. You ask, and then you tell, and then you issue a citation if nothing's done. But most of the time, the first couple of letters get the job done. And we've had pretty good responses to property maintenance. But there's a couple of larger ones that might involve not only ourselves, but the county, that we'll be working on in the spring. So just a thought, just something that, you know, supervisors seem to be supportive of it, but wanted to bring it to your attention before we bring it to the board to see if there's any comments or questions that you guys might have on it.
Would they, be the possibility of following up on zoning compliance also? Or just blight type stuff?
We'd probably just stick to blight, yeah. Zoning compliance stuff is typically my bailiwick.
Okay, so you do go around and check projects every now and then?
Yeah, just spot check, yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, I'm just going back to the way the city operates. I mean, it's crazy. I mean, they're, they're watching everything. You know, if it's not permitted, you know, they're right on it. You've got to get a permit, you know, and if it's not, if you're going to build an eight-by-10 deck and it's eight foot six by 10, they're on you.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't, we're not that hardcore. I think we're two people with 54 square miles to deal with. But the application itself, zoning compliance application, that's a legally binding document. So, you know, we sign off on that. They, they demonstrate that they're going to meet our requirements. If at some point they don't, then the, the onus is on them.
Right, okay.
But yeah, we, I mean, some of the bigger projects, we check up on landscaping, you know, Meyer, Texas Roadhouse, or things of that nature. But decks and garages, you know, if, if they're too close to a property line, the neighbor will call us and tell us.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
So that'll free up a lot of time for you guys then in the summer, or a little bit?
Who wouldn't say it would free up a lot of time? It would just be one of those things that we could address in a more meaningful way than we have been able to in the past. Just because, you know, you get busy with something and, you know, we're a developing community and there's lots of activity in the summertime. And it would just assist us with, it's almost like, you know, having an extra person in building our grounds or what have you. It just, it makes a little bit of difference in your level of service.
Enforcement part is what I was most concerned with anyway, because there's no point in having policies and ordinances if we don't enforce them.
Yeah, yeah.
And it makes us look stupid, like somebody gets by with something and the other person doesn't.
And we've demonstrated, you know, there's an issue out on Lake Enchantment where it was cleaned up to a certain extent that we were satisfied with. And a month later, it was right back to the way it was. Happens to be a neighbor of the Planning Commissioner and it went to court. The judge told him to clean it up and they did, and, you know, and now it's going to go right back there, so. Hoarders.
Okay, well, I just want to comment. I, I think that the turnaround on a request would be expedited. And I also think it might satisfy a first-time visit to get some information, to come back and, and maybe it would involve a senior person. But before you do that, it wouldn't hurt to have that kind of information.
Yeah, and actually, we utilized a retired police officer who was very familiar with not only the city itself, but he knew a lot of the people that were, let's say, were upkeeping their properties, whether they were frequent flyers in other ways or what have you. But that person was very effective at that job.
I think it's worth a try.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, you know, I think customer service is a big deal. We try to have great customer service, as you commented about. We hear all the time about how our office is run as opposed to how the city operates, their office, from a zoning standpoint. And we're pretty proud of that, so we try to do a good job and get people where they want to go. Thanks.
So I guess if you want to put that on agenda.
Okay.
And that's convenient for you to get, so you have information and, you know, if you, we don't need candidates' names or anything, but if you have possibilities that you can.
Yeah, I would see it as just a typical application process and request, or, you know, not a request for names, but we'll just put a, a blurb out there that we'd be looking for somebody for, you know, six months. It's a pretty cake job, really. I mean, you're not paying for gas. We provide you everything you need to do your job and, you know, you just go out and take pictures and say hi to people, so.
Okay. Anything else on staffing then?
I think so, Johnny.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure you were kind of, John, do you want to?
This is the first I've heard about this, so.
His?
This one, yeah. I wasn't aware of this.
I'm sorry.
So I guess I don't have much to say on it at this time.
Okay, well.
I don't think it's a bad idea, I just haven't had time to process it.
Maybe I, obviously, I didn't come in and talk to you about it, I'm sorry. Maybe I'd started to and.
Yeah, I don't want to say anymore, not having had time to think about it beyond. It sounds like a good idea.
Okay. How about your staffing? Do you want to talk about anything or questions?
I don't know that my staffing is so much a concern as the clerk's staffing, or lack thereof.
Okay.
Which we just discovered this past 10 days or so.
Yeah.
It was a rough 10 days.
The early voting.
That being said, we also still have to resolve the treasurer's office staffing. I mean, it's currently overstaffed and we've done that intentionally to try to get it back up to speed, but it's not sustainable long-term in its current form. So we need to address that sooner than later. And I think it really depends on who does what there. Otherwise, I think we're properly staffed for what we currently need.
So you want to make that part of your report when you talk to the board? So everybody can hear what your issues were? I mean, if you want to say something, that's up to you, bud.
Well, again, the state of Michigan is, for this year, clerks are going to have to work 300 extra hours without getting extra compensation because of the new law that came in with the voting, early voting. And elections is part of the clerk's duty, but early voting is part of the clerk's duty now, even though you have to be there for nine days at nine hours a day. So it's pretty rough on the clerk's office trying to do that. And then you got to, you get a day off and then you got to be there for 16 hours on election day. So it's kind of a rough, rough go. So we're, we're brainstorming how we can adequately staff those things moving forward.
And for those of you who work full-time, that's even more ridiculous, because you have to dump shifts or whatever.
I'm going to take time off, I'm losing money.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, sorry. So you can bring that to the board, they will decide that anyway. All right, do you want to touch on the master plan, Jason?
Yeah, so this is our current master plan, 2020 to 2024. Essentially, what this is for the public's edification is just a fancy landings plan, but it basically is a roadmap on how the township sees itself when it grows up. And as of this year, it expires in '24. By state statute, you're supposed to update it every five years. We are very fortunate to acquire or be awarded a grant from MISHDA, Michigan State Housing Development Authority, for $50,000. There is an emphasis on housing with that grant, but it can be used to update not only our master plan, but our zoning ordinance. I think $50,000 is a lot of money. In fact, even 20, well, when I first started doing this and I was doing master plans for QPAD, even some of the bigger consulting firms in the state were only charging like $20,000 for a master plan. So I'm hoping that we can stretch not only a consultant to come and assist us with their master plan, but also maybe adjust our zoning ordinance to come in and police the master plan or, you know, make the, make the master plan more effective. So what I'll be doing later this week and into early next week is putting together a request for proposals. I received a large spreadsheet of potential consulting firms from one of the representatives at MISHDA. And so we'll just blast that out and see what we get back. And then, you know, put a bunch together and start our process of updating the plan. So I'm pretty excited about that. It's the first time, I think this is my third master plan cycle. And this will be the first time, I believe, that we've had like a bona fide consultant come in and assist us with this. So Lynn and I both have been sitting in on the housing task, task force that's been implemented by LSCEP. There's a lot of good data to glean from, from the housing study that was done. And so we're hoping to implement some of those policies and goals and objectives in the new master plan with regard to housing, but also obviously update the rest of the plan as well. So you've got sections on transportation. Of course, we'll have 2020 census data to include with all the demographics. The natural resources, like climate, geology, topography, that stuff doesn't change too much. But existing land use is changing, it has changed since the last iteration. Community services, of course, has been bolstered a little bit. Public participation, and then the meat and potatoes of the plan are really the goals and objectives in the future land use and zoning plan. So that's what we would be looking for assistance with. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to kind of have, you know, a nice, a nice budget to work with.
So that means maybe we could do another survey of sorts?
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, it's a community survey.
Kind of survey or something?
Um, we'll probably do some charrettes and use this room and invite, I would like to do a kind of, the county did this with their master plan update. They kind of identified specific areas in the township and then invited a lot of those people in or, you know, I mean, they, they.
They named them and color-coded them?
They named the areas, but I think certainly you could circle, you know, the Forestville area right now, or where the Fly Ash Road is now a public area. And that land has not been owned by anybody else but We Energies for more than 50 years. And now there's moving and shaking going on out there with, with land use and we need to be on top of that. Trowbridge Park's another area, and then the corridor is always one as well. So, yeah, I think there's certain areas that we can look at, you know, with more detail in those areas.
With a little help from.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have somebody from outside the communities, you know, look at us and see how we're developing and then, you know, have some pointers and maybe they have some experience that we don't have, so.
Great, anything else? Tim, what?
Would they be coming up here for that, sending someone up here for wherever you get?
Yeah, I have a feeling how it worked, Jim, is that, you know, there'd be an initial kickoff meeting and then maybe some of the work would be done remotely and they would send it along. Or we'll jump into some Zoom meetings or something for updates. But I imagine, you know, if we landed like a consulting firm like McKenna or something like that, that they would want to do part of it remotely just because of the distance between here and Grand Rapids where they're based out of, so. Yeah, I think we'd have to be flexible. And I think that's just the new way things are being done anyway, so. Yeah, that's the challenge of hiring a good firm, is that friction of distance between where we're located and where most of their offices are based out of, downstate.
What kind of specific things would you be looking for from them to come up with or suggestions or?
Um, well, certainly knowledge of, of housing, that's one thing I've been looking at. Each of the websites I've been going to is their experience with housing. There's lots of new housing tools out there with the residential tips. Finding somebody that's, you know, kind of knowledgeable about that. But also transportation, I think, is a big one. So, yeah, just getting some input from experts with, you know, more people on staff or just more experience than what we have here.
So they wouldn't be getting into looking for any kind of grants or any kind of that then?
For?
For any, any kind of project or transportation or?
Well, we're aware of those already, I mean, for the most part. Yeah, no, they would be, I mean, their, their charge would be a deliverable and the deliverable would be an updated master plan. I mean, certainly, we can, you know, pick their brain about funding opportunities and maybe we can ask them for that to be listed in the plan. But it's more about just implementing some of these ideas that are going around in the county with regard to housing and then looking at our transportation issues and maybe coming up with some solutions, so.
I like the idea of doing like a focus group, getting random individuals from different parts of the township to come in.
Yeah.
Maybe not have anybody from staff that are about higher mediator or have somebody there so that they can just talk openly and honestly and then have the mediator report back that this is what.
Yeah, Philville was a good example. We had a lot of people that came to that meeting, right, for the short-term rentals. And then obviously, the long-year folks and the here-on-woods people, you know, that's an area of concern. But it's going to be an area of concern for a while, because, you know, they've got a lot of property to develop. And, you know, I think we all have aspirations of connecting the Fly Ash Road and coming back around through Forestville, hopefully with a, a better cross-section, a more usable cross-section and safer road network through there. But, yeah, that's one area that sticks out.
Well, if we get through all of this and you've got other questions, you know, or comments, absolutely feel free, I just don't want to miss anything. Upcoming activities and actions that the commission might be working on, doing? Well, obviously, the master plan, I don't know if you had anything else in the works that.
Short-term rentals?
Yeah, that was the one that got missed on the agenda, that was under there.
Yeah, so the Planning Commission's been looking at perhaps slowing those down somehow or curtailing them altogether, or having some kind of proximity requirement similar to what the city did. So the city's pretty much plotted, so they, you can only have one per block, on one, a side, you know, one block facing side. I'm interested to hear what a consultant might say throughout the master planning process. So typically, the process would be you update your master plan with these ideas and then the zoning ordinance comes in behind it and kind of picks up those ideas and puts them into, into law. But we may decide to make a change with the, with the short-term rentals ahead of that, so in stereo with the master plan. We reviewed a slideshow that Eric and I attended at the Michigan Planning Conference last October, and the name of it was "Legal Considerations for Short-Term Rentals." And essentially, the State Supreme Court deems them as a commercial land use. So that kind of changed the, I think, some, not the minds of planning commissioners, but it got a different idea into their head about how to permit and regulate them. So I don't know what else to say on that, other than you guys are looking at options and doing something different than what we've been doing. We have about 30 in the township. We, to be honest with you, really haven't had any problems with them. The only problems that we have is when there's a public hearing on one and then all the neighbors come and they're not happy about it. But for the most part, other than one issue that I'm aware of at Phil's 550, which is attached to the store, actually, so that was one of the first ones. And that makes sense, because it's at a commercial establishment. We really haven't had any issues with them at all. And that's that two-way review. I'm renting from John, you're going to review me as your guest and I'm going to review you as my host. And if you mess that relationship up, I think you'll have a hard time renting another property, at least on Airbnb or Verbo. So we've all used them, I'm sure, you know, and you know how it works. And it's just more of a challenge to mitigate some of the comments that come from the residents that are there that might have been notified of one that's going to be within 300 feet of their property.
And we're certainly keeping an eye on what our legislative body is doing.
Yeah, there was another House bill that was released. I included that in the Planning Commission packet. That one didn't seem to be as restrictive for township, but still, you know, the real estate sector's driving these bills coming out of Lansing to deregulate short-term rentals, so that you can't buy a house up here, come up here a couple of times a year and then the rest of the, you're making money off of it the rest of the time.
They're looking at a tax, a tax of who would pay to someone and someone would get money?
Yeah, the state's looking to, you know, for their share too.
Where are the short-term rentals primarily? Are they all in Trowbridge or?
They're pretty well dispersed, actually. I would say the majority of them are in Trowbridge. There's some up along 550, both north and south. And I'm not aware of too many south of the highway. So, you know, a place like Bishop Woods, they have covenants, you know, they're not going to allow that.
They aren't recorded covenants, though?
No, yeah, well, you know, single-family homes like that are mostly, I mean, I think we had one there that was operating illegally for a while, but they shut that down. But most of those homes on the south side are more year-round, you know, occupied, single-family homes, so.
I just received, we get a newsletter from Michigan Restaurant and Lodging Association, and I just, I just got a notice today or a news, new newsletter that you might be interested in. And then there's a package of bills that they just introduced, which, about short-term rentals, that would require all short-term rentals to pay a 5% lodging tax. If local municipalities allow to levy an additional, optional, 6% tax, which is pretty interesting. And it would allow local municipalities to create zones, create communities to revoke short-term rental permits if necessary, regulate the number of units allowed to be used as a short-term rental and protect public safety. Prohibit outright bans of short-term rentals under the proposed zoning laws and enforce a statewide rental registry to assist with regulation and tax collection.
There's still no oversight with somebody that wants to rent their home. So trying to force them, if they want to be on the RBO or something like that, or Airbnb, they've got a little more oversight as far as regulation. But if somebody wants to start something in their home, they're not going to be paying taxes. Or we even had a hotelier that was collecting the tourism taxes and putting it in their pocket at one point. So, and hotels have a lot more oversight than even something like that. So I think they're going to have a hard time collecting that tax. 6% is what the tourism tax is too, plus the 6% state.
There's a lot to do.
Yeah.
It can be a challenge.
Keeping up with the times. People are being very innovative with their properties. I've come to find, because not just here, but some of the surrounding townships too. You don't have to be on Airbnb or VRBO to rent your property. You can be on Facebook Marketplace and rent your place though, so.
So do you want to talk a little bit about the grants that you applied for in the recreation activities? The one we didn't get for the trail hat, maybe?
Yeah, I think everybody knows we didn't get that.
Oh, I know, but, but we're still looking at some of that stuff.
Well, not this year, we're not.
Okay, but it didn't die, I mean.
No, I mean, NTN, I think, is interested still in participating. You know, anytime you can do a project that benefits their network, they're going to be supportive of that, but.
Now, the Recreation Village expires this year, is that correct?
It's been expired.
Yeah.
It's been expired, so, you know, are we going to? When did it expire? In twenty-three?
I don't remember the exact date. We collected it for two years and we, we calculated we actually had about two extra years of operating revenue. So we didn't need to renew until year, for year five, I guess.
So maybe we, what we want to do with that?
Well, keep in mind COVID happened in there, so a lot of things didn't happen as quickly as we had originally hoped. So you don't want to tax, keep taxing the taxpayers if you're not spending the money you already got from them. At some point, it makes sense to bring it back and if there's a good justification for it, I don't see why we wouldn't.
Okay, oh, I thought you might want to talk a little bit about?
Yeah, well, I see what you're saying now. So I think at our last planning commission meeting, we talked about the potential of having a small rec millage to, you know, acquire a pot of money to do some of these projects outside of applying for grants and relying on the grant process because, you know, we have a higher median income in this community that, that hurts us on grant applications, at least through the trust fund. And we are not part of a metropolitan area. So you think about us competing with, you know, some of these more, um, um, I got, I don't know what the right?
Disadvantaged?
It's a D-word, yeah, disadvantaged communities down in the southeast of Michigan. We're going to lose every time. Not only that, but we've also been very successful with grants and they know that. So it would be different if we didn't have, wouldn't have been awarded a grant in the last ten years. But we've been awarded a lot of grants. You know, we fixed up Lyons Field, we put a tunnel under the highway, we connected that tunnel to the Ironer Heritage Trail. We finished out pretty much everything at Schwalmwood Park that we're looking to do. So the, the DNR is aware of that and, um, and now we may suffer for a little while because of that. Not suffer, but they're going to spread the money around.
Yeah, we're going to have to put some money in the pot to make this work.
Yeah, and I guess the idea was, you know, is, would it be advantageous to go back to the city at some point now with a different makeup of their leadership and, and look at purchasing back some of the property that's in the township that they own? Like I said, when I first interviewed here, I know Dennis Leamington left the interview, came back and had this beautiful print of, uh, you know, uh, outdoor amphitheater and soccer fields and a campground and that was all down in, you know, near the Hartwood Forest property. Not, not in the area that everybody wants to preserve, but adjacent to that. So there's lots of room down there. We've been talking about acquiring other property for recreation, but we already have property. I mean, we have some nice property off the Well Road, but of course, Public Works doesn't want us down the Well Road unless there's, you know, something to be done there because the road's narrow. It's not an ideal place to have people coming in and out of there all the time. And I get that. But it would be nice if there was a way to utilize, you know, property north of the Well Field, but also not in the Wellhead Protection Area, um, but property that we also already own so we're not paying a hundred thousand dollars an acre up here, you know, just because of where it's located. I mean, if you have recreational facilities, I, I believe people would go to them.
I think they're already going up and down the Well Road. Someone already told me they use that all the time.
Oh, yeah, they do, but you can't, it's not advertised.
Who does?
Someone told me, a public person, said they go up and down and bike back there all the time.
Well, there's trails all over back there. They're NTN trails, but the road is gated and it might be open during parts of the day when we have a crew down at the Well House?
It doesn't mean they're riding, it doesn't mean they're driving a vehicle. They could be going up and down on their bike.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's already being used, is what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, so whatever we can do. I, I mean, I'm a big supporter of some money put aside for recreation because that's what we are all about here. We are about recreation for our children, for our middle-aged folks and for our seniors.
My opinion, since the day I arrived here, was if the township wants to accomplish as many of its goals as it desires to, it's going to have to have more skin in the game on some of these projects because you can't rely on grants to do every project. You have to fully fund some of them yourself.
That'd be our...
Well, the chair of planning probably ten years ago brought that up numerous times. Ellen Sargent and she and Mike Springer were big proponents of trying to do that, just that, and having match money or money available to buy property or something. And the board at the time pooh-poohed it, so that's probably why it hasn't come back either for discussion, but...
Yeah, I kind of, you know me, I'm like, I don't want to have everything all the time right now. But, you know, realistically, I, I think pickleball is like a huge thing, as an example. And yes, we're going to resurface the tennis court this year and get that squared away so that we have something. But I mean, when you look out at like Sands Township of all places, they have a beautiful facility out there. And I just think that, you know, with our population and the amount of taxable value that we have in the community, we should be able to shift that stuff around to make some of those things happen. Yeah, I'm not a big fan of a municipality being a real estate agent by any means, but, you know, if an opportunity comes up and, you know, I know we've got the five acres over there we've been trying to market and hopefully we will, you know, eventually get something going there. But that's, you know, that's an opportunity as well. But, yeah, I, I just think that there's things that the community wants and I think that's going to be emphasized in our community survey. You know, not only do we want to ask questions about recreation, but specifically what types of uses people want to see. And I think, you know, the trails are obviously going to be top priority. But, you know, we've, we've taken care of all the roads now, pretty much, except for Commerce out here, which is, well, maybe not our Ballywick, but, um, we've kept a flat tax rate essentially for residents. And those were the top two things, uh, be- beyond snowplowing. So now it's going to get into, you know, more of the minutia of what people are really desiring in their community. I think recreation's going to be at the top of that.
Yeah, I don't doubt it. The problem is, it always, everything comes back to money, you know, is how we make that work. And John can tell you how much we had left out of the budget once we put it together this year. There wasn't a whole lot to play with. So moving the money around is going to be a little bit more difficult, which is why maybe the millage idea is going to, would be the answer. I don't know. But the whole taxing idea of what the DDA is trying to do with, you know, millages and police and fire and, you know, you start adding up, the library, everything that's extra, just takes a bite out of their pocket.
And that might be the answer, Linda. It could be, you know, asking residents, are you willing to fund this? We could do that through our survey too.
Yeah.
You know, we had seventy percent of the population that voted yes to fix our roads self-tax. So I, I think that it would be almost highly supported, as, as supported as, as the roads were.
But remember too, the, while the road millage and the police millage were supported and implemented and the, um, they both went through, the general fund is supporting both of those millages because a lot of the, sometimes the tax tribunal, other issues too. But for the most part, the tax tribunal took all that money back, so...
Yeah, has that been, I mean, so the big box issue for the people that are here, you know, taking a store like Meyer or Walmart, which is a top-performing store in the entire Midwest. Hundred million dollars, that's what Walmart does. I'm sure Meyer does above that. So they're trying to say that their store is worth an empty vacant store in southeast Michigan that's been, you know, not even open for years. So what happened is, is a lot of those stores, and not just the ones that were top-performing ones, but basically everybody that had a commercial interest in the township came to us and challenged their taxes. And so now, instead of it being worth what it's supposed to be worth or what it's probably insured at, it's worth a fraction of that, according to their attorneys. And so the township had to give money back, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, we're up to millions.
Millions of dollars, which could be used for building, fixing roads and the like. So that's something that normally we wouldn't be dealt with. And my question, I guess, has that been sorted out to the point where that line in the sand's been drawn and we don't have to go back to that? No, so it's still a constantly fluctuating thing.
Wait till Panera goes, wait till the Texas Hot, Roadhouse goes or the Steakhouse. It doesn't matter.
They should though, they're leased, they're leased.
The manager or director or whatever he is of Meyer, the day we did the ribbon cutting, I pointedly asked him that. I said, so how long is it going to be before you go to the tribunal? Oh, we've already decided that at corporate level, it's never going to happen. Yeah, right. So they get two-thirds of their taxes back.
But, but now we know, you know, that insight when the road millage was passed was not there. Now we know there are dark store issues. And so when you do a road millage, or not a road millage, a recreation millage, then you only can spend what comes in. I mean, you, you know, you have to just kind of go, oh, we learned the hard way. They budgeted road money to be on what they thought the taxes were going to be and they got cut. So we've been through that game. I don't think we would be silly.
Well, it was a fifteen-year millage, so that, that's even worse.
Yeah, I don't think we would do that again with recreation. I tru, I, you know, I, I truly believe that if you want your community to grow, you need to have things here that people want.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we've been hearing it in the office, you know, we hear it at the Rec Committee meetings. We've got some fresh Rec Committee members, uh, which is nice too. And they have different ideas, you know, they, they have great ideas. And I want to keep them busy and keep them active, but, you know, there's not a whole lot to, to work on right now other than updating the master plan and I, I gave them some homework recently, but, um...
You're going to have a new member too, or hopefully, I'm going to have a rec application for you Wednesday.
Yeah, do you know that, did he apply? So that gentleman lives in Oak Hills and?
No, not him.
Oh, no.
He lives down at Curran's.
Oh, a different one.
Is there somebody else?
Oh.
I guess he missed out.
Is the one that Eric?
No, he just, I don't know where he came from, he just put an application in.
What's his name?
Brian Hummel.
I don't know if it's the same person. Eric had somebody that he was going to put in too, that lives in Oak Hill and works for Trek Bikes remotely.
Aw, gee.
Mm-hmm. I remember hearing a rumor that Trek was thinking about building a, a facility here in Marquette at some point, a number of years ago, but... So they're out of Wisconsin, Trek Bikes is. And they're like probably the biggest bike manufacturer. Yeah. So, no, that's good that we have another, uh, Rec Committee member, but, yeah. I think overall reaching, I think that the township has to have more skin in the game, as John said, when it comes to developing places. Now, if we do something, you know, everything that we've been doing has been outdoor recreation. So if we decide to build a structure or a couple ice rinks or something like that and get a lot of people involved, I think then you have user fees and other things that can offset the cost of those things, but, um...
Something like Nagani built?
Yeah, that was a, I think that was a big donation that Nagani got, but...
Well?
There was actually a grant in the association. It was supposed to go at Alcoa and the city turned it down, Ishping did.
And Nagani?
And they've been thankful about it ever since.
I'm sure.
Because ice rinks are actually very expensive to own and occupy.
Yeah.
But that's not an ice rink in Nagani. That's a, it's associated with the school football practice. Cause you walk in a standard.
I thought you were talking there, Nagani Ice Rink.
Oh, that's been there, yeah.
That's owned by the city.
Yeah, but, but the walk, you know, you're then touching a lot of residents because people walk, people play sports inside of there.
Yeah.
The school is even, I mean, there's just a lot.
It's booked like twenty-four, seven, like even the little kids. It might be at eight o'clock on Thursday night. That was the time that the fifth graders could book it, like it's booked solid. And then there's another side where the tennis courts are, so you can book to play tennis and then you can walk in there. It's, it's, it's ran really well. And even today with the snow day, I saw a post come up and it said, "The indoor facility is open as normal, eight to ten for walkers. If you had a reservation for tennis, they'll open today." And I thought, what a nice day to go play tennis, you know, like, I was actually really jealous when I read that, you know? And, um, it's been well upkept.
Yeah, y- y- you can tell it's highly organized.
It's very organized.
It's, it's one thing to, you know, make some phone calls, but it really would take a consortium of people to pull something like that off. And I don't know how they did it, I would like to find out, but, um, you know, can't do it all on our own without any money. So it would take, uh, but those are the kinds of things that I think people would like to have, you know?
I'm sure they share that.
If we came up with a plan of what we wanted, kind of designed it and kind of had a, a price point of it, would it be possible to go to all of these corporations that we have on our corridor and approach them in that manner? Would you be willing to donate toward this facility, which is in your backyard? Because you're getting away with taxes that are a third of what they should be.
Maybe if you don't approach it that way.
Well, I know if you don't tell them that, but I mean, I think, you know, because they all, all those corporations like to give money back to the community. And if it would be something that they could get publicity for, you know?
Advertising, yeah.
Right.
Walmart has programs, they do it for police and fire all the time. I can't imagine they wouldn't want to do it for a good, any kind of good civic project.
Meyer does too, it's tapped out.
Yeah, they do, they have a foundation.
Those might even.
Yeah, it's the whole wellness concept. I mean, that's really kind of a way to go after it. It's wellness for a, a whole group and your medical community will be not here. Don't, I mean, you know, those people are asked often, but the whole big Blue Cross, you know, those are the people that want wellness to, you know, to pay.
Um, so, yeah, let's, you know, utilize that community survey this summer and get the vibe of the community. And then I think from that, we can start to put together the plan, you know, maybe that he was talking about and start putting some numbers together. But, you know, I've got friends in the community too with kids that are playing hockey and, you know, they're kind of tired of some of the prices that they're paying for ice time. And not only, not only Lakeview, but the Berry too.
They match each other.
You know?
The thing is, you build a brand-new facility and it's still going to be that expensive. That's my opinion.
Well, you, you know, I don't know if you need an ice rink in a brand, or if you put a roof over the ice rink and you continue along the way. I, I mean, I don't know that.
We're still being built because there's, you know, newer facilities that I've been to where you have two sheets of ice and you've got a bar and a restaurant up on top that overlooks both of them. I mean, interesting business concept, of course, but maybe something that we don't want to run per se, but, um...
I think the results of the community survey would be useful to achieve some of the goals that Carl talked about with asking for people. But it would be good to be able to point to the survey results.
Yeah.
And say, this is what the community would like it, it'll help you get advertisements.
Yeah.
On that note, let's be good planners about it and explain to the people how, if this works out, how soon something like that could happen. We deal with this at the DDA all the time, right? They wanted to do it yesterday, but they can't do it until five years from now because that's when they'll have the money. Right now, you're talking about updating the master plan. By this time next year, the results of that effort might tell you we need this much revenue, which means you're working on the ballot proposal for the millage to go on an August or November election. You won't see that money until?
Another year.
Twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah, good point.
And, and you can't get too far down that road without making sure you're getting the revenue. So it might not get built until twenty-seven or twenty-eight. That's just the frustration of the government wheels having to turn slowly because you can't spend money you don't have. I know it drives the DDA crazy because they want to do everything right now. I'd love to do it that fast too. But if the money's not sitting there today, you can't just go ahead and do it.
Which goes back to what Jason started out with and Linda about the pot, you know? We were talking about having some kind of a pot of money. And typically, it would be a down payment or a grant match or something. Or if a property came available, but...
But if it's only for matching money for a grant, you might be sitting around for a long time.
For even longer.
Yeah, I think you, you probably could, you, you need to have a pot of money to spend on recreation, whether, you know? I, I think they're just ideas though, and I think we should, you know, do the survey.
If it's the right project, we can fundraise, there's no doubt about it. I mean, like I always say, nobody's going to walk in the door and just hand the township money for nothing. But if they're, have a pet project that they're really interested in, you'll get fun. I mean, we raised two hundred thousand for the underpass, like fairly quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't have any input or, or any...
Yeah, we didn't have any input or any monetary.
There was zero tax dollars spent there, so...
So you shouldn't be able to buy a, get an ice rink, because Northern uses that ring too. I mean, there's a couple connections, but this, this is not the time.
I was hoping somebody would take one of those stalls in the mall and put one in there, some developer, you know? Or two slats and charge for it, yeah.
That thing's a mess.
Well, all the more reason, get more business in there, and get, get it fixed up, and a higher tax base, and then, you know, it's a circle.
Yeah, I don't think they'll rent that thing, but I don't know, I mean, I don't know. I, I think we already have an ice rink, so it makes sense to put a roof, and that's an immediate thing you can see, you know? Sometimes you have to have something you, you can finish in a short amount of time, and people can see that you're moving on a path to do things, kind of like a timeline.
That one has sort of been on the list as long as I can remember, so maybe, maybe we just need to figure out what that's, what it's gonna take to get that built.
Two-hundred thousand.
Hmm, more than that.
Well, yeah, at least.
Well, you know, if you don't know, then how can you ask? You know, I have to say to my people I know, "I need, I need thirty thousand dollars for an ice rink, can you help out?" My friend Tom Baldini says, "If you don't ask, you get nothing."
Well, that's where the survey will be really helpful. I'm excited to see what that, we can start with that.
Yeah, and that's not a full-size sheet of ice either.
And it could be used for more than just ice. If you have a roof over that building, it can be used for a lot of things in the different seasons.
Yeah, that, that I agree with.
So it's a multi-use kind of area.
Almost like a big...
And it's safe for three-year-olds, because it has a gate kind of thing around it. The playground we have there is not as safe, they can run directly out into the street there. So, you know, there's lots of reasons people like that ice arena in the summer. So, I'll knock that, Jason.
Let's hit them.
Nice hard surface to crack your head open on.
Do you have any kind of a Scott update? Because I'd like to talk a little bit about Forestville too.
Yeah, um, nothing on the Scott property, as far as us acquiring property, um, or them donating anything at this time. Um, have heard some rumblings about potential development opportunities that are still in the mix, uh, but nothing for them yet.
I'm sure if they've got a chance to sell it, even as much as they wanted to have some kind of a legacy park.
They keep saying that if they can get what they want for the lion's share of the property, they would, they would reserve six to ten acres on the back half, or the north part of the property, for a park, so...
We'll wait and see.
Yeah.
We can wait.
Boy, I rode that horse all the way.
He did, yeah. Yeah.
I don't think it's done, they've had the time.
Throw a pail of water on ya.
Yeah, no, she's, uh, Tanya's very excited, I mean, when we had the grants going forward, she had the conceptual plan as her Facebook cover page for like, the entire year. So it's, it's something that, you know, we planted a seed for them, it's just a matter of, they need to be made whole, I think, in their mind, on the value of that property, and as you look around the community now, in the corridor area, there's not a lot of developable property left, and the property that is there is not ideal, like North of Meyer, the Up the Sky property, you know, that's not even accessible right now, um, so there's, that's, that's prime development property, and hopefully we'll get a bunch of residential and a mix of commercial in there.
I thought there were a bunch of developers who were interested in it once.
They are, but it's the Scott family that's really tough to work with.
Okay. Uh, Forestville, I don't know, do you wanna talk about that, John, or?
I don't know that there's much to update, other than there's a Circuit Court appeal on the ZBA decision. So, at this point, it's in the court's hands, and even then, I don't know that what went to the Circuit Court has anything to do with the Planning Commission's decision. I believe that it's only the ZBA's decision. Um, this is all legal stuff, which is not my lane, um, and, you know, the, um, it's their right to do this, so we have to follow the process.
Well, the problem of us not being able to own the roads, or I mean, I guess we could, if we wanted to, but we don't have a lot of control over what happens there, you know?
I don't think we have, have the opportunity, unless we become a city or village.
I know, I don't know if that's ever happened, but I know that the state road commission was talking about allowing townships to buy the roads, or take over the roads, but, so maybe that didn't go that way. That's what I mean, if we had that opportunity, I don't know.
Yeah, I...
But it'd be pretty expensive.
You think we're paying a lot in millage now?
Yeah. So while it's up, that while it's at the Circuit Court, is the project on hold, are they not allowed to move forward? Or do anything with it? Well, this is being sorted out, or is this putting a hold on?
Well, I, I think they're continuing on with their final design, final engineering, based on what was approved, uh, which all has to be done before they can get going.
Right.
We don't have, uh, final water maintenance sewer plans for permitting, for instance. Stormwater, I know that was one of the issues that one of the Planning Commissioners brought up. Well, what the Planning Commission normally sees on those, while it is a specific PUD requirement, is still a staff and consultant issue to review. I mean, we, we hire somebody to review those for us, because we historically have not had the staff here to do that ourselves, so, um, they still have to finalize their, their engineering plans, which comes after the final site plan approval. So they can continue with that. I think they're continuing to work on funding mechanisms, looking at, um, other options as far as, um, making a percentage of the project affordable, or something missing middle. I'm, I'm not sure which terminology they're gonna use. I, I think it's a great idea if they can. I don't know how they're gonna make the funding all work out, but we're kinda waiting to hear back from them at this point.
Yeah, the PUD agreement, which is a requirement of the planning unit development process, that has not been submitted yet, and that's a requirement, that goes to the board, uh, eventually, so, yeah, they're, the ball's definitely in their corner, on that aspect of the project.
That being said, they may get to a point where they have to stop and wait for the court decision, if it appears they're gonna get to a point where the court could tell them no. I would assume they'll have to, they'll have to decide how much risk they're willing to take.
Can you imagine being a judge, having to sift through all of that information?
I think it's pretty cut and dry.
I mean, I think I'm a pretty educated person, but boy...
Pretty ridiculous, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, well, they wanna develop this land, but it's zoned this, but then they have a PUD process, but yet they don't own their roads, so how can they make the intersection safer, and, and who's this Mr. Pesala, and, and why is he doing this? That's kind of the way I looked at it, like, nobody's contemplated taking any of his property, and I think that's one of the main tenets of his argument.
Yeah.
And the other one is safety, of course, but we're all concerned about safety, so, you know, I was explaining this to somebody, uh, who didn't know anything about this, and I, I said, I think the Planning Commission, given all of the parameters that they had to look at, and the fact that there was a housing shortage in the area, and they know that the intersection's not the greatest, I think the Planning Commission approved sixteen out of two-hundred-and-forty units as a balance to try to get something going, and not jeopardize the safety of those in the area. And that's basically the common sense approach that I think the Planning Commission took.
There was a survey that said that that many houses was safe on that road.
Up to a hundred. The road commission said up to a hundred, so there's another thing the judge gets to look at, well...
Perimeters for our decision.
Well, the only, I can do a hundred, but they only approved sixteen, I mean...
Yeah, and why is that a problem?
Why is that a problem?
It's change, right?
Yeah.
Change is difficult for a lot of people, for various reasons.
Well, like I've said a hundred times, that I, I, I don't know that I started specifically, but when I came in as supervisor, that was one of the first things I did, was start looking at that intersection. I don't remember if Dennis looked at that, I, I think he may have, I don't know, that's a long time ago now. Um, but safety's been a concern at that intersection forever, and we're still working on it, you know? We've got the partnership involved, and we've got Senator Peters' office involved, and we had some plans that were, like, ready to go, and Jen Hill said, "Ah, no," so we're back to square one, trying to figure out how to get different kinds of funding, or if we can, like John said, it'd be a, a bugger to try to put, you know, four or five grants together to get that whole intersection funded, but something needs to happen regardless.
If there's even that many available.
Right, right.
The options are so limited.
I'm sure you were looking at the paperwork, like, oh my gosh, I can't do this.
A consultant would be doing it, not me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still the road commission's, that's their job, and that's their road, and we maybe can say, "We support the road commission," but it's their road.
We'd still have to find something they'd agree to, too.
Well, right, and I'm still not sure it's our job to do that. We, we would be the supporting grandma, but we're not the leader there, that's the road commission.
Yeah.
And...
Ours is the safety part.
Well, but there's safety at every intersection, everywhere.
No, not when it's, not when it's the worst one in their network, as far as, no.
It wasn't the worst one. The worst one in Marquette County is being fixed by Ishbroming. That was the worst one.
The worst was Walmart's.
The one in Ishbroming is not on the county's networks, that, that's the distinction. This is the worst one on the county's network, or at least it was before they repaved it and restripped it a couple years ago.
Yeah, and, um...
But I, you're right, that intersection in Ishbroming.
It is the one in Ishbroming, right.
But that's not on the county's.
That's M.D.O.
That's a US one.
It's M.D.O.
State.
It's M.D.O. jurisdiction.
Yeah.
And the city has two, no, one, one of the three legs.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a mess, the whole thing, and, you know, my hope is they fix it, but, um, you know...
I think...
Only one person's been killed there, okay?
Out of this league, I think a very carefully crafted survey is the key to a whole bunch of this.
Mm-hmm.
It's key to this intersection, it's key to a lot of things, but it has to be carefully structured when it gets addressed to the public, because we have to communicate that we can't do everything, and we can only do those things that you're willing to share in the cost of. And, and I think that we have a lot to be proud of. I think that our planner and our planning department, there's a reason why all the other townships in the Upper Peninsula are copying our ordinance.
Or I'm working for them.
Well, but there's a reason.
On his own time.
Assisting them, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And, and we've done that for a long time, and it's taken a lot of hard work by a few people. So I just wanna say that, but I think right now, for us, to help out with what Carl pointed out, and others are pointing out about what are the needs, it's that survey that could be an answer, but it has to be communicated in such a way that we get a response from intelligent input.
Yeah.
And you'd be surprised how hard that is. Remember how...
I know how difficult it is.
...the time we spent trying to formulate the questions.
I think we just revisit some of our questions we've already asked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just an update.
But we've accomplished a lot, and we can try that to...
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, in the priorities, we know a lot of them have changed since the last update to the master plan. Housing, obviously, where's our audience, where's their concern? It's housing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's all of our concern, I think.
I graduated from Northern. I don't think I ever paid more than five-hundred bucks a month for a one-bedroom. And now I'm seeing rents that are in town for houses that are more than my mortgage.
What are you paying right now?
Actually, I think a great deal, eleven-hundred.
Eleven-hundred?
That's low.
Okay.
Yeah, it's five-hundred a bedroom.
So there you go, so we're, you know, there's a lot of things happening in the community with regard to housing right now, it's just, uh, they're slowly getting going, and, you know, kudos to the state for some of the measures that they have been taking too, so they're trying to assist us, and just so you guys know, statutorily, townships are different than cities are. Um, we're really limited in what we can do from an incentivizing standpoint, um, as far as helping out or subsidizing projects, we really can't do that. We can't even extend utilities, that's gotta be done by developers, so...
And not that, the, um, the rentals are high, because there's taxes that are charged to people that rent, so the taxes in Marquette are very high, and house insurance continues to increase, so, you know, it's a wicked kind of circle.
Short-term rentals are definitely affecting rental prices as well.
Yeah.
Actually, Marquette's aren't that high compared to some of the other places. City of Ishbroming is.
Nagani's got an astronomical military.
Yeah, and they're really high, yeah.
Mm-hmm, and the people that own the rentals have to have enough money to...
And we've kept ours flat for how many years, John? A lot.
So it's an interesting marketplace up there.
As far as a, um, judge making a decision on that, am I wrong in thinking that the decision is whether to send it back to the Planning Commission or not?
I think, I think the judge can...
That's all he's deciding on, or she's deciding on?
Yeah, I, I believe what John said was accurate, that they're just deciding upon whether or not the appeal could be heard by the ZBA.
Right.
Our ordinance explicitly says that it can't, and that's backed by state statute, because it's also listed in there as to whether or not your zoning ordinance references that, which ours does. Um, I don't know what the judge is gonna do. I mean, he may be, say, "Hey, bring this back to the Planning Commission, you guys figure it out."
Well, it's either bring it back, or not bring it back.
Right.
Those are, those are judges' choices.
Mm-hmm.
And then where, where's the next step in that? If he says, "Don't bring it back," is it done? Or is there another?
I, I'm not sure.
You don't know either?
I mean, there's, it could go all the way to State Supreme Court, I suppose.
If, if the judge says that this doesn't go back to the ZBA, the final decision of the Planning Commission and the ZBA are final. That's, that being said, we have no idea what the judge is gonna say. It could be a lot of things we would never anticipate.
If the judge sends it back to the ZBA, he'd be asking us to do something that the state law prohibits.
Based on what our ordinance says, correct? In which case...
No, not just our ordinance, but state law, you can read it.
Well, the state law says you can't appeal it if your zoning ordinance says you can't, otherwise you can. So if the judge says something contrary to what our attorney thinks our zoning ordinance says, then we would have to decide if we appeal that decision or not. So...
Right, yeah.
It, it gets complicated.
Which is why litigation's never a really good idea, because I don't think anybody really wins.
So if it did go back to the Planning, the, uh, Planning Commission, would we have to go through the public hearing process all over again?
I'm not sure. We'll get all that guidance.
I was involved in a, a situation like this in the city, where the zoning, uh, they approved the zoning for a structure, the neighbors are all up in arms, and the same thing, that they sued, and sued, and sued, and they said, "Everybody did their job, the work was done right, and proceed." It took a year, but it, you know, said proceed.
Yeah, I have a feeling, you know, Circuit Court judges are not dealing with land use matters very often. They're dealing with drugs and family criminal law, and I have a feeling that a judge is gonna side with the property owner, a- and in this case, it would be Longyear and their development. I, I really do. And I think Longyear's got some major, major strings that they can tap into that nobody even has any idea about yet. I mean, they haven't countersued or done anything yet, they're just kinda sitting, waiting to see what happens, but, I mean...
Maybe. They, they might, um, there's a way that they can enter their own arguments against the lawsuit, since they would be the harmed party.
Yeah.
That's possible. I don't know exactly what the terminology is, 'cause I'm not, I'm not a legal, legal expert, but there's a way that they can attempt to intervene, I think, is, intervene might be, might be the terminology, but anyway.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I feel the same way you do. I, at first, it started keeping me up at night, but after that, I just said, "You know what? Whatever's gonna happen's gonna happen, and we'll react to it and deal with it in the best way that we can." I mean, we, we're fortunate to have a bona fide developer that has a closed loop... I mean, we, we're fortunate to have a bona fide developer that has a closed-loop almost system for wood and timber and making things happen, so. Um, and they've got a lot of property to develop, so if they did it the right way, and we have proper access and transportation, I mean, I mean, they could literally go on forever out there.
That being said, what they're proposing is not affordable housing.
No, it's market.
There's gotta be some sort of subsidizing if there's going to be anything lower than, uh, market rate housing.
But it would open up other, other homes in the area. That's what we've been kind of saying at the planning commission level. I mean, it's gonna cause a shakeup, you know.
So what about the other PUD that is, um, by the golf course? Is that moving along? I mean, that was our first one, right?
Yeah, no, they've been selling properties. I think they still have some utility work to do, uh, come spring.
So we didn't get any other feedback about anything else from that one?
That one's actually in the final stages of finishing up the utility so the city can assume ownership, at which point they can really start building every one of those lots out.
So that PUD, we must have crossed all the Ts and.
Oh, yeah, that one went fairly smoothly.
Well, there wasn't any objections to it, to the point that there are here.
So I, I foresee that more of these will happen. That's what I.
Yeah, and it may be.
Small cities or small communities.
I would love to see, uh, you know, uh, forty acres of tiny homes somewhere, uh, you know. They're not. It's not like they're ugly. I, I've been saving pictures online, you know, shipping container homes. You know, they're selling those for two or three thousand dollars. Can you imagine building a home for twenty thousand dollars in shipping containers? It'd be a pretty nice home. And the ones I've been seeing on TikTok or whatever, they're incredible, incredible looking. And they're, they're tough and they're strong and well insulated, so, yeah, it's just, we have to change with the times. Not only us, but the building codes department, at the county, everybody's gotta be on board to allow some of these different things that people want to do, whether it's geodesic dome, tiny homes, those type of things. So we, we're, I mean, we're ahead of the game in our ordinance, in my opinion. Now, we're gonna introduce the accessory dwelling units. That'll take it another step, and we'll talk about density. Um, those are things that, you know, this housing task force is going bonkers with all this data, but it's pretty simple what it needs to be done. You need to add a little density, accessory dwelling units, and make sure that your zoning ordinance covers different home types, not just, uh, you know, one thousand square foot, a finished floor area, you know, single-family ranch home. Um, there's different ways to live, and people up in this area like to take advantage of that.
Is it interesting that we're talking about accessory dwelling units in the way we are today versus when they were cracked down on twenty years ago or whenever, and what it'll be like twenty years from now? Because it, it seems like it's sort of that swelling tide, right? What, it comes and goes based on what you actually need, and if you don't adapt, you're not gonna see the growth.
Yeah.
So it'll go somewhere else.
Minneapolis completely, uh, removed single-family homes from the zoning ordinance, single-family districts. So now you're gonna have a mix of housing units. You might have a strip of apartments and then a single-family home. Or you may have a, you know, a four-plex and then another single-family home. So that was, it's, that's a, it's a big move. And I hate to say it, Minnesota's really got it going on. Uh, Wisconsin's doing a pretty good job too, so, yeah, we're right there. It's just, we're a little bit behind the times.
About demand, too.
Yeah.
You folks have anything you want to add or ask, or stand up and pound your fist about?
Not so much the second, but, uh, in regards to this suggestion of a future survey when the need is there, um, the past surveys, what format they take is the first question.
Yeah, so we did mailers, uh, and then we also had online. Um, this one may be all online, just because it's so easy to do. Um, the, the issue is trying to make sure that we're having our residents fill it out as opposed to somebody in Florida. You know, uh, maybe they live a half a year here in the township and, uh, and half in Florida, but, um, yeah, making sure that we get the right information from people.
Yeah, the follow-up question to that was, has there been consideration of creating an engaging video short film format along with it? Uh, meaning so whatever you provide, say with the online, you have not just talking heads, but creative ways of discussing what's in the survey and asking the questions, and even having your voices or voices from the community aid it and communicate it to have a heavy response?
No, it's a great idea. Um, I don't think we've thought that far ahead about it, but it's certainly.
That would give more depth to the question.
Yeah.
If you're familiar with resources, we could tap into for something like that. We'd be curious, for sure.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of people in mind. I've retired from documentary filmmaking, uh, to do what we're doing here, being a student again. But Aaron Peterson, uh, I think is definitely approachable.
He worked with Trail Marquette.
Yeah, and I have a couple other contacts in the area that I know who would be interested in that, because it's all about following through with, um, communicating to people the needs and also ways in which we can improve the area. When you bring up ideas of housing, for example, wow. I mean, if people can tap into this conversation, um, I, I can see it being done in a creative way, especially with the tiny home idea, um, where people can actually voice their opinion in response to something that they're seeing visually. Sky's the limit, because what social media brings is a way for people to immediately respond. But our surveys, if they have that social media component to it, where it's shareable and extremely accessible to our people, I think it'd be beneficial. The response would be a lot higher.
We just, like Jason said, have to try to gear it to our residents.
Our residents.
That's the hard part, because we talked about them, we did, that's why we decided on the mailing, so it would be targeted. We had actual addresses. You know, and then supplemented with the, the first one definitely was all mail and phone calls. And then we had public forums too. We had, you know, opened the community room and had conversations and, um, showed graphs, map, not maps so much as, um, had pictures and stuff up to try to get, you know, as much as we could in roads. It was roads, 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 roads each time.
Roads aren't going away either.
Right.
Do you know what your actual response was?
The percentage?
Percentage?
Yeah, we do have that.
It was, uh, it was scientifically relevant, so I'm not positive on the, but, you know, and something like that, that kind of survey, uh, people are typically pretty responsive because they live in the area and they care. So, yeah, we thought it was relevant for sure.
I had a question for more of the beginning of the meeting. Um, you guys were saying that clerks have to work three hundred hours more now with there being like a election year or policy change happened? Was that a state policy shift or a federal policy shift or something?
That happened last, in the twenty twenty-two election cycle. With that proposal for the early voting.
Yeah.
That's where that happened. So that was state-driven, well, citizen-driven by state of Michigan.
Okay.
I think the nine days is what's made it so difficult for Randy's department. You know, even if it were two or three days, it wouldn't be too bad, but.
Well, how many, you had like an average of eight people a day?
We had seventy-five people for nine days. It's a long nine days.
You've got a handful of people sitting there, you're paying for them all day, each one of those days.
I'm feeding them.
Very expensive.
Yeah.
Well, you'll be happy to know I didn't, I didn't mail mine in this year.
Oh, good.
We've got another meeting to get to?
Yeah, you do. I just wanted to make sure they had a chance to say something.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming.
You can stick, stick around for the planning commission if you want.
Some of us are.
Okay.
The chair is gonna represent for us if he decides.
So we do have Community Day in August, August third, and we're always looking for volunteers to help us that day, so.
August third, August third.
So let me know if you're interested.
Wyans Field area.
Wyans Field, yes. All about the kids. Oh, yeah.